Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for May 23, 2007. We are in the John Farrow Memorial Council Chambers in Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Tony Cardenas, Wendy Gruel, Jose Wezar, Tom Labonge, Bill Rosendahl, Herb Wesson, and Dennis Zein. We are waiting two more members to establish a quorum, which is 10 of our 15 members, or two-thirds, which is the minimum to begin our meeting. And Mr. Smith has joined us as well. Thank you for joining us. If I can please ask Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Weiss to join us. As soon as one of them arrives, we will have a quorum. Want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, L.A. City View, your city channel, which broadcasts these meetings live throughout the city's cable system, and rebroadcast them in the evening. We also are available online at lacity.org, where there is streaming live webcast of our council meetings. And you can always pull down "Council On Demand" now, video on demand through our city's homepage, where there's also wealth of information about your elected officials and about the other city services crucial to the quality of your life. We also are available through Council Phone, which is a telephone service of our Information Technology Agency. You can call 213-621-CITY and dial through the telephone menu and listen to our full council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. Our agendas are available online at lacity.org through our city clerk or here in council chambers. And we also invite members of the public to give public comment on items that have not yet had a public hearing at the committee level. All items either get a public hearing at the committee or full council level. And lastly, if you'd like to give general public comment on items not on our agenda but nevertheless under our jurisdiction, we invite you to fill out the speaker card and just hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms. We now have a quorum, so Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weasel, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President?
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Labonge moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, with Ms. Gruel seconding. Without objection, those two will be approved. Let's run through the agenda, please.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue items 22 and 23 for 30 days to June 26.
Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing those two items, 22 and 23, until the 26th of June? If not, please, that'll be the order of business. Next items.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 8 are street lighting district items. Notice for public hearing, council should continue the hearings and ordinances to June 13.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing, and without objection, we will continue those till the 13th. Next items.
Items 9 through 17 are building and safety assessments. Notice for public hearing, the department reports that items 15 and 16 can be received and filed in as much as the assessments have been paid. On item 14, the amount has been reduced to $8,778.48 in as much as a partial payment has been made. And I believe there is a request to continue item 10 to June 6.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll continue item 10 till June 6. We will move 14 as amended, and I will move 15 and 16 to be received and filed without objection. Any specials, 9 through 17? Seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 18 through 43 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. We have cards on it? Oh, sorry, these have been held. So we have 43 special for Mr. Alarcon. Any other specials, colleagues? This is 18 through 43. Number 30 for Mr. Labonge. Let's hold the ordinances on the desk till we have 12 members, so that will be 18 through 21. Any others, colleagues? Seeing none on the balance, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items 44 through 54 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, let's hold the ordinances on the desk. And do we have public speaker cards on any of those?
There are cards on 51 and 53.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. Colleagues, any specials? That's 50, 52, and 54 are left. Any specials for those three? If not... I think we have 50, 52, and 54 left. Is that correct? Okay. Go ahead, open the roll on those three, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 55 and 56 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold those on the desk. We have Mr. Alarcon here now, waiting one more member. Next, it's not quite 10:15, so we'll wait on the special meeting. And why don't we go ahead and take public comment at this time? Our first speaker is Skye Anderson. Welcome, Mr. Anderson. Good morning, good to see you.
Hi, I'm Skye Anderson, a resident of Los Angeles for seven years, and I have a TV show that plays in the L.A. 11 o'clock Thursday night. The topic is what goes around comes around. About three months ago, I complained about how the person who was promoted by Time Warner being head of the studio, all of the studios in Los Angeles from Hollywood, was Mike Decagney, and how ruthless he was in treating me. And shortly after that, there's big article on the L.A. Times about how Time Warner was not being responsible to the public. I read an article in the L.A. Times about a week ago where one of their head men was condemned, kind of, because he was brutal towards some of his staff members. I opened the Daily News today, and here's, "All I want is to kiss goodbye to Time Warner." So the topic is what goes around comes around. And I spoke here before about Mike Antonovich, the county supervisor, and how he's killing our children because he wouldn't help the kids on Skid Row. He wouldn't help the kids in the rescue mission. My premise was that drugs are killing our society. Drugs are the primary factor behind gangs, prison overcrowding, homelessness, AIDS, broken families. And I had a staff member from Mr. Antonovich call me, and I talked to him about this, and he said, "Well, Mr. Antonovich has done a lot about drugs." And I said, "Well, tell me what?" So he sent me a letter about a month ago that Mr. Antonovich had done something seven years ago about drugs. Seven years has gone by, and he hasn't done a damn thing. These kids deserve to get this new home in Mr. Antonovich's area. Developers are organizing against him. They're getting petitions signed to send to him. They're selfish. They don't care what happens to our kids. They care about their damn money. I think that's brutal. Abraham Lincoln had a vision of what was going on with the slaves, and he saved the slaves. Now these black children can grow up free. If you want to be famous, take up an issue and help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Our next speaker is Suma Dog. After that will be Noel Weiss.
Yes, thank you so much. I got a call this morning from somebody about Playa Vista, so I'd give them some attention. There's a methane task force since 2004 that's supposed to be evaluating all the methane problems in the Playa Vista area. And I was told that Building and Safety has been filtering out the public. They have not been including neighborhood councils, Building and Safety, they just, you know, completely steamrolled it, did not allow any public input. They didn't allow any public participation. And so yesterday, they had a meeting, a task force. After 2, after, since 2004, they had the first task force meeting, you know, all these years later. And they said to the public, "Okay, well, we already did the environmental for tasks, we already did the environmental study. Here it is, you can take a look at it and make comments." The public's here to say, "No, we ain't buying that, y'all. We got to be involved in the task force from the beginning with that environmental impact because the people that did the environmental impact report were the people that have methane gas interest, okay?" So, and no, they wouldn't tell the people who made the report. It's all shady. KNBC's reporting it, lots more to come. Let the people be involved. We got to start that environmental impact from the beginning. All right, thank you so much. Jack Weiss is finally here. You can check the L.A. Times, there's a big story about him. It's the Jack Weiss Recall Campaign. If you want to find more, you can go to recalljackweiss.com. Speaking of people who are against the public, AB 1381, Mayor Antonio of Viagra-OSA, you spent a lot of money and a lot of city time on your shady, unconstitutional, illegal mayoral takeover bill. Okay, we told you it was wrong. You got your ass beat down in court, it's thrown out to the curb, and now we got about a million dollars. You're going to get sanctions from the judge mayor, and you're going to have to pay L.A. USD court fees, you're going to have to pay all these court fees, and I say I want that money put back into the general fund, okay? You're cutting budgets everywhere. I talked to someone from the Treasury, they said the mayor's spending like crazy. They say the mayor's guy, he likes to travel, he likes to hire a lot of people, y'all. So I say we put a moratorium on the mayor's travel expenses unless it's somewhere inside the city. I'd like to see the mayor inside one of the 15 districts for once. And I'd like to say, we got vacancy rate problems. Start enforcing it. There's going to be lawsuits up the ying yang, y'all. Suma Dog.
Noel Weiss is our next speaker.
Councilmembers here, I wanted to talk about the 1295.2 issue because it's particularly relevant to Mr. Wesson because I know he's been a leader on that, and I appreciate all of his efforts with regard to the enforcement on that. The issue is, there was a tenant appeal that was granted in Mr. Garcetti's district. In speaking with the tenants, Mr. Garcetti, again, I think yesterday, we talked in terms of the question of landlords basically abusing the situation, what's going on in that particular situation. Because it's non-rent controlled, what the landlord is now doing is he's now raising the rents. It's kind of like during the earthquake when there was no water, and all of a sudden you go to the local 7-Eleven, and water goes up to, you know, $10 a bottle. They're basically, what they're doing now is effectively going to raise the rents on the tenants. And this is the example of why we have the problems that we have. It's a situation that will hopefully require the involvement of the council office in terms of you're letting the people know essentially that where the L.A. City Council stands in terms of how this issue and how your people are going to be protected. But the bottom line is, we have a housing policy need. We, I mean, all this issue about the, these housing issues, it was just a dance around the core issue, which was what is the housing policy of the city? And I respectfully request at some point, sooner than later, the council begin to set specific goals. We're going to reduce the, we're going to, we're going to reduce the rental rate. We're going to increase the homeownership rate by X percent. We are going to basically move forward and try to increase so that an amount of affordable housing in the city by X date so that we can, you know, begin to basically move the ball forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Arx Antikian is our next speaker, and then Arnold Sacks will be after that.
Good morning, Honorable Council President Eric Garcetti and City Council members. My name is Arx Antikian, and I'm here representing the Armenian Cultural Foundation. My purpose of being here today is to announce the Second Annual Armenian Independence Day Festival. It will take place this Sunday, May 27, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. in Little Armenia, Hollywood. It is cosponsored by Council President Eric Garcetti, as well as Assembly Members Paul Krikorian, Mike Fuhr, and Kevin DeLeon. It is a celebration of Armenia's culture and independence, and it will feature a variety of musical and dance performances, various vendors, ethnic food, and a kid's zone, including petting zoo, games, and rides. The admission is completely free to the public, and we thank the city of L.A. for allowing us to shut down Hollywood Boulevard between the streets of Vermont and Alexandria to accommodate the festival. And we also thank Council President Garcetti's for his cosponsorship of the festival for the second year in a row. And for more information to anyone, please visit our website at www.littarmenia.festival.com or call 818-507-1933. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thanks to everybody at the ACF. Looking forward to it. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks, and after that will be Sharon Brewer out in the San Fernando Valley. Good morning, Mr. Sacks.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you very much. Just wanted to make some comments about yesterday's meeting. There were two things that came up. One was by Mr. Reyes, Councilman Reyes, regarding a rebuttal from somebody in the city council's L.A. River Plan, that over a 25-year plan, the L.A. River will be brought back to its original state. And also, basically, we're talking about a 50-year, 50 years of history. Councilman Alarcon mentioned that in 1981, as a member of Mayor Bradley's, one of his committees on gang violence. So that's 25 years there and 25 years to the future. In 25 years, gangs still a problem. Not only are they still a problem, but they're worse. So how much money has been spent by the city council or allocated by the city to combat gang violence, and yet, not only is it getting worse, it's getting larger? And Councilman Reyes is saying that, "Don't worry, in 25 years, the L.A. River will be back to its original state." Well, if global warming continues, sure, it'll be back to its original state because L.A. will be underwater. But my point, between the two points, is right now, today, tomorrow, MTA is having a board hearing on raising their fares. I've come before City Council to ask for clarification from somebody regarding the numerous construction authorities. The MTA claims they don't have the revenue to operate in a positive manner, but their expenses are unaccounted for. Does anybody here, we have members who used to be in the state legislature, we have members who are on the MTA board, does anybody here have an answer? What's going on with MTA? And if those are, if you can't answer those questions, what are we to believe based on your previous actions? What are we to believe about future activities? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Sharon Brewer out in Van Nuys is our next speaker. Public comment.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. This is an update on the Encino Neighbor Council election, June 28, '07. There are still three sets of election procedures that are out. One on the website that was not approved by the Encino Neighbor Council, a template that was handed by the project coordinator that was not approved by the Encino Neighbor Council. Neither were approved by April 28, 2007, which is the timeline, 60 days before an election. On May 15, I appeared before the 9/12 Commission and spoke about the problems with the Encino election, and the general manager and the assistant general manager for Dunn and a BONK commissioner was there. I came before you on 5/16 about the problem with the elections. On 5/17, I went to a BONK Commission meeting. The general manager and BONK commissioner was there who heard me speak on, at the 9/12 Commission meeting. On 5/19, I was at the Citywide Alliance meeting. The general manager of Dunn was there. Nobody has come up to me to question my statement that there are three sets of election procedures that are out that have not been approved, that are not in compliance with the citywide election procedures. Right now, the last flyer to the community was sent on April 27, and it only had candidate form in it. There's no information that's gone out since April 27 about the election that is on June 28. No forms, no information whatsoever have been put into our posting places, and this election needs to take and be postponed. We have candidates that are running, but they haven't posted the list of candidates. In one area, we have one person running that, there are four posting sites in that area, and about 5,000 people. Something has to be done about this election. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. That closes our general public comment. If we can take up the ordinances, now that we have 12 members, this would be 18 through 21, 44 through 49. Unless there's any members who would like to call those special, which we asked before, if not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Can we take up the first item called special, please?
Item 30 was called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Tom Labonge, number 30.
Thank you very much. Is any city staff here to discuss this issue at all? Thank you, Mr. Karsh. Have an update on this, please?
This is a bill to lift the prohibition of tunneling for a subway under Los Angeles in the direction of West LA. The House bill, which is the subject of the resolution that we're seeking support of, has passed the House, and it's in the Senate. We believe there's a reasonably good chance of the thing going through.
What's the schedule? What's the timeframe?
Well, essentially, they have until the end of the session this fall to get this through.
What do you think's holding it up?
More processing than anything else.
No other thing like that? You think it's just a process?
As far as I know, it's been processed. There's been new engineering studies in the last few years that say it is feasible to tunnel for a subway in this part of the city of Los Angeles, so that removes any kind of technical objections to the bill. It does not have money in the bills, so there is not that.
I understand that. This is a long step that we're going to have to take. We'd probably have to walk it a million times before it's going to be built. If we walked Wilshire a million times before the subway's built, it will take that long, but it's the first step. Question, this is just because of the restriction that Congress put on this area. There's no restriction on tunneling, let's say, from Chandler and Lancashire to the San Fernando Valley North if we ever push the subway north in the valley.
That's correct.
So we could push that and advocate for that as well?
That's correct.
Would you suggest that since the City Council, Los Angeles, under the direction of the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, takes a strong position on this and supports it, that we should have some pronouncement out on Wilshire Boulevard to say that we want Congress and, together with the House and the Senate, to pass these?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Karsh, Mr. President.
Thank you.
We asked for an aye vote all the way. It will take a million times to walk right now from the terminus of the subway at Western all the way to the ocean before it will be built. But this is the first step in a long walk to get rapid transit out Wilshire Boulevard.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you, Mr. Labonge. We introduced this motion because we thought it was important for the council to go on record supporting this legislation. It was introduced a year ago, which we supported. It did not get through council, through Congress on, I think, some technicalities and political things happening, not related at all to this issue. And so we wanted to go on record again, saying that we thought the time has come for us to be able locally to determine how we can, when we can, be able to make this a reality, which is a subway down Wilshire Boulevard. It is something that is universally accepted. It might not have been 20 years ago for a variety of reasons, but the mayor brought together a group of individuals to talk about the aspects, really, of whether or not it was safe, based on the questions raised over 20 years ago. And in fact, technology has changed. We have successfully had sewer construction, all kinds of things happening within that vicinity, and the containment of the methane gas was really able to occur. I want to thank Congressman Waxman, who has been pushing this, and Feinstein and Boxer, who introduced it on the Senate side. We are very optimistic that this language that had restricted us from receiving federal funds in the past will be lifted by this Congress. But we thought it was important for council to take the position to say, "We are 100% behind this." And all too long in this city, we have not had the vision, the vision to say, "We are going to be able to have..." going to be able to have," whether it be an orange line, a dedicated busway, subways in the San Fernando Valley, across the city, particularly here on Wilshire Boulevard. And this, I think, is a great step for us to move forward. And I just want to thank, again, Congressman Waxman for introducing this and pushing it through Congress. When we were in D.C. just a few, maybe a month or so ago, I know Councilmember Rosendahl and I talked to many of the elected officials about the importance of supporting this, and we don't think there's any opposition to taking away the restriction that had previously been placed here in the city of Los Angeles. So similarly, I asked for an aye vote. I don't anticipate anything differently, because we have adopted this before, but we thought it was great to have an official position of the city of Los Angeles. Because to deal with the traffic that we have here in Los Angeles, we are gonna have to look at a variety of ways in which we increase public transportation. The time has come, and we're looking forward to this being approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker, and then Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ditto to my two colleagues and their comments, but let me ask you this. 21 years ago, it was put on hold, okay? There were some reasons that were suggested, were safety reasons, and then there were other reasons that you hear in the back of discussion of politics, okay? The kind of politics that none of us think is worthwhile politics. Now, let's get back to the safety issue. We did have that explosion in Fairfax. It was a serious issue. We have methane issues and safety issues throughout our city, where 40% or 35% of our city is built, you know, on the fact that we have methane around because of the oil wells that we have. It's a rich oil area. Are you sure right now, from our perspective, that all those safety issues with the new technologies, 21 years later, is such that there are no safety issues?
There will always be safety issues where you have a vehicle traveling at high speeds, underground, overground, whatever.
Understand that.
So with that caveat, I would say, yes, I'm convinced.
You're convinced. And another issue we went through with this whole subway business, not the one to the sea, was the corruption of some of the subcontractors and the MTA and all of this other garbage that was thrown in, and people got scared and stopped even dealing with it. From your experience now, are we prepared to move forward with this in such an expeditious way that the costs will be somewhat contained and the process will be clear to all of us?
Yes.
I'm happy to hear that, and to restate what my colleague said, I appreciate the leadership coming from Washington this time around, and let's hope they hang tough and strong and deliver that opportunity for us so we can get the subway to the sea in our lifetime. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Ms. Grul for introducing this motion. I actually very much like being the second on this motion, and that it is a motion that comes from a council member from the valley, because I think that shows the city, and it should certainly show all of us here, that transportation is not a localized issue, and that it affects your life in the valley, whether or not there is a subway from downtown to Century City. It affects your life in East L.A., whether or not there is a subway from downtown to Brentwood. And so I very much appreciate the fact that it was introduced in this way, and I think it is a great statement that the council is going on record in favor of this. I mean, let's face it, as Mr. Labonge knows better than any of us, there will still be folks in the communities along the way who will not want this to happen. I mean, there will still, Mr. Rosendahl knows this as well. There are gonna be folks who don't want this to happen, but it is something that clearly ought to happen for the good of the greater city, and so that's what our hopefully unanimous vote today will signify. But I like the fact that it was all started off by someone from the valley.
Mr. Labonge, to wrap things up. Nope?
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for that nice compliment. But it all started from a councilman who represents the valley, who first initiated on the MTA board the study that got through. So this was the key, and it does take a long time. And members, I want to remember a great speech that John Farrell made to Tom Bradley at the leg, at the opening of the first, first part of the subway in Los Angeles. Because Mayor Bradley, when he ran in that great victory in 1973, he said, "I'm gonna have transit in 18 months." And when the dedication took place on Hill Street, John Farrell said it in a very special way, and he said, "Tom, you were right. You were right about one thing, 18. It took 18 years from that 1973 point to get here." It does take a long time. This is a step and a long process, and it should go everywhere. In fact, with Mr. Weesar's leadership, we're looking at expanding the metro. I see there's the deputy mayor of transit for the mayor of Los Angeles. Why don't you sit down and put that raspberry in your pocket there? Mr. Weiss, I yield time to Mr. Weiss for a moment.
Point of clarification by Mr. Weiss at BlackBerry.
Point of clarification? No, actually, I think, I think he has the new one, the raspberry. You're absolutely right about that, Tom. I just want to say, you're absolutely right. I remember the article that came out, I think it's in 2003 or 2004, when you were sitting on the MTA board, and you suggested this, and at the time, it didn't get attention, it didn't get support. A lot of people sort of shook their heads, and now we have a new mayor who is championing it, but you are absolutely right. You, Mr. Labonge, put this issue back on the map, and you did it at a time when it was far from popular, and I yield back to you, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, but I want to credit Santa Monica, Beverly Hills especially, West Hollywood, and Culver City that helped. Hold my time. Deputy mayor, give us an update on this matter here. What do you know? What do you hear?
Thank you, councilman. First off, I was using my BlackBerry to respond to another member's request, so I was trying to multitask.
They should be in council.
And for the record, Mr. DeLa Vega, will you just identify yourself for our viewers out there?
Sure. Jaime DeLa Vega, deputy mayor for transportation. Obviously, the mayor is in full support of this bill, and he and Councilmember Parks took a support position at the MTA Board of Directors, and the mayor would obviously support the council's position on this bill. Couple of technical issues that I think Councilman Labonge was asking about. The engineering panel, which the mayor put together last year when he was chair of the MTA, concluded unanimously that it is both safe to build and operate a subway under Wilshire despite the geological conditions.
This is important information. I thought it was Dr. Eisenstein that was...
Dr. Eisenstein was a, was, is another consultant retained by the MTA.
The previous one.
He's still on board and still advises the MTA, but the panel that reached the conclusion that the subway could be safely built and operated was an independent panel, five members, including appointees by Congressman Waxman.
Right, well, we were involved in that, yeah. But I mean, it started, it takes a long time, is what I'm saying.
That's correct.
Everybody's gonna do it. You know, they built freeways before, you know, in three years. Now it takes 20 years, and they're not gonna build freeways, maybe remove pinch points. But we just gotta do this, so I should stop talking. But I do want to say, members, tunnel in the valley as well. Come north on Chandler and Lancashire, out to the 170, and like Bart, just to remember, Bart is partially underground and majority above ground, out into Concord, out into San Mateo area south. We gotta think differently now. And also with Mr. Weesar, we have a plan right now, Mr. DeLa Vega. If you're free this weekend, it's a three-day weekend, we could pour a platform station at Fourth and Santa Fe, right, Jose? And we could get subway service to the Art District. I want you for that, and we could continue to expand the system that is so needed to be expanded for all of Los Angeles. And it's good to see the voting clerk smiling. Thank you.
Good. We'll have that done in three days, Mr. Labonge?
We could. A platform station, the rail's there, the third line's there, just don't hit it.
You'll be right about three. All right, with that, we'll close the debate, and if we can open the roll as amended by Ms. Grul, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 43 was called special by Councilmember Alakon.
All right, Mr. Alakon? Item number 43.
Members, this is the matter that would establish the Ad-Hoc Committee on Ending Poverty in Los Angeles, and I want to thank President Garcetti for allowing me to move this forward. But I also want to thank my colleague Herb Wesson, who initiated this project with me in the state of California, when we created the Joint Select Committee to End Poverty in California. And so I would like to put this in that context. First of all, let me say that the work is going to continue at the state of California. Speaker Nunes, upon my election, sat down with me and agreed to continue the work, and Assemblymember Fiona Ma in San Francisco has agreed to chair that committee, and they are moving forward. I also introduced AB 56 this year that would create a Secretary on Poverty for the state of California, and I'm hopeful that Governor Schwarzenegger, with his connection to the legacy of Sergeant Shriver, would also use that as a vehicle to keep us focused on issues related to poverty. The federal census will tell you that 810,000 Angelinos live in poverty each and every day, but that undermines the reality, which is that to be self-sustaining in Los Angeles, you have to earn about $54,000 a year with a family of four. The federal poverty level is at $18,000 to $19,000 a year for that same family of four. So the reality is that to be a self-sustaining member of Los Angeles, you have to earn $54,000. The reality is that more than a million people, far more than a million, probably closer to 2 million people in Los Angeles, are living day to day without being able to sustain themselves with their own personal economics. So this is absolutely essential to Los Angeles. My commitment is that we will come back with a plan that suggests ways that not just the city government can address poverty, but the ways that business community, the social service community, the faith-based community can come together to work with us on how to end poverty. I also commit to you that I don't want you to stop any of the other efforts that you're doing to reduce poverty. This is specific to developing a master plan, and in fact, hopefully, will enhance your efforts, and hopefully, we can work together to produce a master plan that incorporates your thoughts and ideas and the work that you are doing in your various committees on issues like homelessness and health care and all the other things. So I thank you in advance for your support of this measure. I want to thank councilmembers Wesson and Grul for agreeing to serve on the committee, and I'm very thankful that we can put this kind of energy forward for the city of Los Angeles. The state of California, by virtue of Assemblymember Ma, has agreed to allow us to be the lead in Los Angeles for the master plan that they are developing, and so we can coordinate to develop a master plan, not just for Los Angeles, but with the state of California that will be a model for the nation in how to address poverty well into the future. So I want to thank you in advance for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon, and thank you for taking the initiative on this here locally. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
I'd just like to ask Mr. Alakon some questions about this. Obviously, poverty in our nation is getting greater, the rich are getting richer, zillionaires are being created, and we have a farcical minimum wage in Washington. They barely raise it, and we out here talk about a living wage. Some of us were fighting hard for a living wage in a group of hotels along Century Boulevard. When you think of this committee, I mean, this is the committee of the committee when you think of the real reality of what we're dealing with. How do you see functioning in this milieu, in this reality? And what are your goals and objectives with this particular ad hoc committee?
First of all, the, I don't have a problem with the rich getting richer, but I'd like to see the poor get out of poverty. And so I think that there's a balance, there's a harmony that must be created in that equation. First of all, we need to upgrade the quality of jobs and the pay and the wages and benefits that the workers receive, so that they can infuse our consumer-driven economy with more dollars, and the rich, therefore, will continue to get richer. It's not, we shouldn't think of fixing poverty on the backs of the wealthy. We should think about how to creating the, how to create the harmony that would stimulate a greater economy that we have not seen today. Our educational system is critical, and that's why we applaud the mayor for his focus on improving the education system, and we too welcome that opportunity. Health care, the issues of health care have to be addressed, and that's why I say this master plan cannot be wholly encompassed on issues that the city is directly related to. We have to look outside of our circle in order to really bring all the pieces together for a master plan to end poverty in California. My personal opinion on any of these subjects will not undermine everybody else's opinion, but we absolutely need the input of many, many collaborators throughout the city of Los Angeles who have dedicated their lives to work to end poverty, and also those who want to contribute now.
Well, getting beyond the rhetoric here, my friend, the reality is, is minimum wages and living wages and unions and fighting and capitalism, these are the big issues of America, and I just don't know how this committee finds itself able to function within that mix, when we do know that we have given super tax cuts to the super rich, which was unconscionable. We also do know that unions get bashed at every street corner, and yet it is a special interest of the people's interests. We know that living wages and a better minimum wage are key. What can this committee do other than talk about it?
Well, quite frankly, I don't want to fall into the same trappings of the liberal rhetoric. We have a pragmatic system, we do have a capitalist system, so in that context, how can we move forward with an agenda that recognizes that poverty is undermining everybody's opportunities, it's undermining our gross product, and I believe we can craft a master plan that addresses all the issues, raises all the ships. The reason I hesitate to get into any specifics is because I do not want to impose my personal point of view on a master plan that is going to incorporate many points of view, and want people to feel free to come in with whatever their opinions might be, so that we can draft a wholly encompassed master plan that isn't singularly focused on one opinion of one council member.
Okay. No, I appreciate that very much, frankly, and I think it's a great moment for you to put some focus on it. But I'm not naive here. We don't have health care for our American people because the insurance companies have strangulated that special interest process. 31% of every health care dollar goes to the insurance company. These are fundamental issues of fairness that the nation needs to address in the state, and I'm thrilled that you want to take it on at this local level here. But we're gonna need all levels of government, and we're gonna need a heck of a bigger platform than an ad hoc committee to talk about homelessness.
And that's why I mentioned the collaboration with the state of California. I think that's a critical piece, and again, it's not about government, it's about our system as a whole. How do we make all the parts work toward ending poverty?
Right. Okay, well, thank you for your...
By the way, I should also say that as items come up, we're not gonna, we're not gonna wait till a master plan comes out. We will be introducing motions as issues arise relative specifically to issues on poverty.
What would be great is if you could get some of that stuff out before February next year, when all these characters who want to be our next president, that you can take some of these proposals and some of these suggestions and make it into a national dialogue in a presidential election, which we in California will have an impact on.
Well, having said that, it reminds me, when I educated a presidential candidate in the last go-around about the formula for defining poverty in the United States, which needs to be changed, it's based on a simple statement that three times the cost of food is the, is the, per family, per year, is the poverty rate. So that the same formula is used in Alabama and Georgia, as is used in Los Angeles, and we all know that it doesn't factor in the cost of transportation, childcare, and high cost of housing. So the fact is, on the national agenda, yes, you want to tell the president, the next president, to do something about poverty, tell them to change the formula for how they define poverty, and if they do that, we would increase the dollar invested from the federal government, change it from a donor state to a positive state in terms of our receipts from the federal government, because more people would qualify for more grants from the federal government.
Yeah, I like that, and my last comment is this, I would appreciate if you could come up with some serious recommendations before the end of the year, so that we can inject it January into the presidential race and put these candidates' feet to the fire on that February 5 ballot, so that we actually can take an idea that we've worked out and say, "Okay, presidential candidates, react to this issue."
Well, I'd be happy to do that, and in some form, and I'd be happy to work with you on how we present that to those candidates.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our last speaker. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 51 was called special for cards from the public.
Colleagues, this is a fair hearing item. If I can remind all council members, this has a quasi-judicial and a slightly different scenario, so if everybody can please direct their attention to the public comment, we also did not have a hearing in Plumb, I believe, because of lack of a quorum, so folks can please direct their attention. Our first speaker is gonna be Noel Weiss. After that is Zuma Dog, and then we'll go from there. Our first speaker is Noel Weiss.
Oh, okay.
Two minutes, please.
Councilmembers, good morning. Um, the, this item really calls attention to the tension between what community plan is supposed to do and what zoning is supposed to do. We have a circumstance here where when you subdivide airspace, it really does involve a discretionary act. We all understand that the zoning, if in fact you are building an apartment, that you can, the zoning basically controls. The problem is where you ha- if you have a community plan that talks about preserving the existing character of the neighborhoods in terms of scale, height, bulk, setbacks, appearances, um, then all of a sudden you, you, you have this zoning requirement that involves the exercise of discretion by the city council in subdividing the airspace, then the question then becomes what happens? Uh, how do we reconcile this tension? Because if you go to forty-five feet and you're dealing with single-family or duplex two-story buildings and the character of the community is destroyed by virtue of your, your build-out, what do we do? This seems to be a problem. Now, the, the only answer so far from the planning department is, "Oh, well gee, if it was apartments, we can do this." Well, you know what? It's not apartments. It's condominiums. It's subdivision of airspace. I think it's reasonable, uh, for the city council in these situations to begin to enforce the community plan. If you don't like the community plan, change it, but to allow this, this inconsistency to exist is going to create problems and difficulties and I think again, we're in a situation where the city council has to lead instead of follow. Um, and this appeal should be granted on the basis of the fact that we are contravening the community plan because in the exercise of the discretion, I think the facts are there, and obviously it's Mr. Wesson's call, but the facts are there to justify and support the lowering, if you will, of, of the height so that you maintain consistency with the community. Um, that's, um, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Zuma Dogg is our next speaker.
Yeah, what, what's going on in the community is you have a lot of, um, projects that maybe apartments, it's affordable, you can afford to live there, well, no, then they want to convert it to a condominium. Is this, is this regarding demolitions? Noel, is this regarding demolition or construction of the, um?
Your family, no.
Yeah, it's a demolition. Okay, we need this to apply to demolitions as well. We got the condo conversions, when it's an affordable rental and the landlord wants to make more money and, you know, turn it into a condo, then there's rules that apply for conversions. They don't apply to demolitions, okay? We need them to because you're screwing up the community. These people still are, the vacancy rates as well, twelve point nine five two, I want to see those enforced. You know, there's a reason why those are in the formula in this city. You got no housing policy. First of all, you do things piecemeal, you don't look at the holistic picture. You'll approve a certain project and say, "Well, this is okay" because you're only looking at that from an analytical standpoint. You're not looking at all the other projects in the community in the area as well that affect the infrastructure. That's called a holistic approach. You can reference Dr. W. Edwards Deming for more on that. And also, um, there's the aesthetics and whatnot and overall, huh, 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 I'm all burnt out now, but the point is, we got vacancy rates, we've got planning, local neighborhood councils, local planning commissions who make these decisions and then when the developer doesn't like it, they'll either repeal and then, you know, put it in your guys' hands and you'll have to sign it in blood. So start paying attention to vacancy rates, the, the, yes, the main thing, the final thing I'm going to say, because this is so confusing, everyone admits this is confusing, Herb Wesson admitted to me yesterday after yesterday's Ellis Act thing, it's so confusing. Here's all I'm saying, when you do demolition, when you do condo conversions, you're supposed to do all this Ellis Act stuff, do it for demolitions too. Make it apply to demolitions because when you kick someone out, it doesn't matter if you're demolishing it or just converting it, they still have nowhere to live, they still have to move way too far out, they still can't afford to buy the house, and so do all these things because you can't have a community. I'm telling you, you can't end poverty with a motion to talk about it. You do it here through this policy right here. Start reducing poverty right here in this room. That's how you do it.
Our next speaker is Rochelle Coretts and, uh, the city attorney has asked me to, um, make sure that we cover, uh, as the appellant, a little additional time, so we'll give you anywhere between three and five minutes, take, take as much time as you need.
May I ask, sir, Rochelle Coretts, I reside at one five two seven South Ogden Drive. May I ask for a few seconds just to address something off the topic of this? Because while people are speaking, I'm looking around and at any given time, six of you were not even listening and I find that-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, there, there are, there are, a lot of people look down because we have the, the screens on the desk right here and we certainly can hear you, so, um, if you'd begin your comments, we assure you that we have folks over there.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, I know that it looks that way, but we have the screens that have Channel thirty-five on our desks. Okay, go ahead.
In any event, I, I was told somewhere that when we have a hearing before the full council, the full council should be listening. If they're not listening, I have to assume that they've already prejudged and made their decision. And I'm sorry that I have to say that, but when I look around and I don't see anybody listening-
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I, as the city attorney, if I can make a record that they are listening-
We are, ma'am.
You're just doing that to make your, your own record, that they are listening.
And, and I am responding to you, we are listening. If you could please give us the comments on the project, please. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your time, I didn't mean to get sidetracked. I've been a resident of Los Angeles for some sixty years residing in a duplex that my grandfather purchased in nineteen forty-six. I am the appellant on this project and I was going to address the issue as to why I felt the planning department was incorrect in reaching the conclusion that it did regarding the approval of this tentative tract map. Instead, what I have chosen to speak about is a much broader issue. It involves the method in which these projects are being approved. The actions of the planning department, as well as those in a position of decision-making, has been to view things in a way that is now outdated and inconsistent with our general and community plans. We as a community feel that the time has come for the city to begin recognizing our beliefs as well as our values. We want to begin a new process of city planning that takes into account these fundamental ideas. It is our goal to get the city to respect the language in the Wilshire Community Plan and to have its decision-makers act upon the principles laid out in these plans. I have spoken to many people within City Hall to try to figure out why this language has not been honored. One person told me it was a bunch of fluff. Two very distinguished people in the planning department said that I should view it as a wish list. I was very disturbed by these comments, I decided to look further. I began to study the general plan and in it was where I came across the following understate requirements, and I quote, "A general plan may not be a wish list. It is a constitution for development, the foundation upon which all land use decisions are to be based," unquote. It is your responsibility as a governing body to respect the wishes of those you govern. You are charged with the obligation of seeing to it that our qualitative concerns are addressed as well as your quantitative ones. It is time to begin a new pattern of decision-making that allows for shades of gray. It is time to stop thinking that just because developers can do something, they should do it. You have been given the tools to effect this change. Are you ready to accept this challenge? It is time to stand up to the plate, sorry, step up to the plate and start doing what your new director of planning, Gail Goldberg, is asking. Let's do some real planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coretts. Our next speaker is Ben Lanesh. As representing the owner, we'll give you similar time as well. Thank you.
Good morning. The case before you is a standard project. It involves a person that invested in a piece of property, he relied on the information that was given to him and he, like, every, a lot of people, feels that it's good to invest in Los Angeles because we are consistent and we follow the rules we have. He's not asking for any variation from the current laws on the books and in addition, our project is similar to four other projects to the west of us, they all have eight units, and there is a project across the street from us that is eight units. We're in the midst of a whole solid block that they all have R3 zoning and we are meeting all those conditions. In addition, uh, we received a set of conditions from, uh, council office Wesson, councilmember Wesson's office, and we agree to all those conditions except for one condition that talked about windows and that the, the owner of the project is very concerned that by, um, frosting the windows, he will not have a product that he can sell. Other than that, we are willing to accept all the extra conditions, uh, requested by the council's office. In addition, I want, I would like to remind you that the west of our project, which is the rear of the building, faces another building similar to ours, so we are thirty feet away from their building. So, uh, frosting, I don't think will really, uh, do much for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Suzanne Coe.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Coe. I reside at fifteen twenty-four South Ogden. I'm here as the head of the Planning and Development Committee of the Pickfair Village Association, recently formed in response to the large-scale condo developments trying to come in the neighborhood. I speak to direct your attention to a letter that was overwhelmingly approved by the association's membership this past Saturday for delivery to you and to the enclosed quotes from the Wilshire Community Plan that should have been distributed to you. The plan calls for large-scale developments in low-density neighborhoods such as ours to be consistent in scale and character. There is nothing over two stories in our entire neighborhood. This project is a four-story building and will tower over everything around it. That's what disturbed us, not that there's condos, not that there's a development, but this, um, huge disparity between this building and what it's going to do to everything around it. The plan contains language to control also against negative impacts on quality of life. The planning department, as my neighbor said, um, called the, the plan a wish list, but the general plan specifically says it is a constitution for development, the foundation upon which all land use decisions are to be based. But not only is the plan really disregarded here, but even the procedural checks along the way, especially the negative mitigated declaration, is just being used to usher projects through. If you read the negative mitigated declaration, there are points in there which are just absurdities. I mean, I read it and as a sensible person, I can't see how the planning department can write some of these things. So I'm concluding that people are just scared that developers are going to sue. These developments are discretionary, so why are they being helped along despite challenges from neighbors at every step and despite the intent of the plan? We intend to bring these issues to the attention of the other neighborhood associations included in the plan so that they can join us in our call, voice to you in this letter, to urgently take steps to honor the language of the plan. We hope that you can at least take some time to look at the process along the way and how it is not regarding the Wilshire Community Plan. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. That will close the public hearing on this, uh, item. Does anybody wish to be heard on this item? Seeing nobody on the speaker queue, we have a vote before us. Um, the communication from the chair, if we can please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. The next item, please.
Item fifty-three was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Item fifty-three is our next item. Uh, Zuma Dogg is our first speaker and then we'll go out to Van Nuys for Sharon Brewer. Zuma Dogg here. Going once, going twice. Okay, Mr. Dogg is not here. Sharon Brewer in Van Nuys.
Hi, Sharon Brewer is here. Um, once again, number fifty-three has to do with special event fee waivers, there are seven on the agenda today totaling twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. That at least is not a lot, but it's still, in some cases, too many. Two of the special events, um, item A, Arthritis Foundation Walk, and C, thirteen, thirteenth Annual Cuban Festival, um, for a total of about fourteen thousand dollars. My concern is that if an event has a major sponsor like a corporation or businesses involved who are making money from the event, there should be no fee waivers given. Example, last week's Bank of America Farmer's Market, twenty-six thousand dollar fee waiver. Um, I don't understand why Bank of America has to ask for a fee waiver. The, another question which I've asked before is, when special events are approved by the city council without a dollar amount submitted, how does the public find out what that dollar amount is? How does the public find out the true cost to the city for waiving these fees? Department breakdown, usually LAPD, LAFD, and DOT. Can someone from the city please, um, answer these questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment on this item. We can open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Mr. Rosendahl, did you-
I was curious on that other issue and I had pushed my button, but it didn't, it didn't go in, about the, the issue of the four-story versus-
Before we get into, in order to discuss it, you would have to move the formally reconsider-
Yeah, I'd just like to reconsider it.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl's, uh, there's no objection to reconsideration of the previous item? Let's go ahead and open the roll. That was item number fifty-one. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is back before us. Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, obviously hearing the public speak was the first time I'm familiar with this particular issue and I'm just-
And sorry, Mr. Rosendahl, maybe the sergeant-at-arms can tell, I know the people that, that are, are, we're here on this, you are still here, if we could let them know that it's back before us. It's been reconsidered, Mr. Rosendahl had questions, maybe for staff on this, we just want to let the, the applicant and appellant know that we are, uh, considering that again. Mr. Rosendahl, please continue.
Yeah, can somebody from planning please come forward on this?
Why don't you come forward to the table, please? The table down here? Yes, Mr. Parks?
Fourth with Mrs. Perry and number nineteen for Mrs. Hahn.
Absolutely. Fourth with on eighteen and nineteen without objection, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, would you respond, um, to, to, to the character and scale question about a four-story versus the existing two-story areas there? How, how, how does this work? I'd like more for informational purposes and appreciation of, of, of why we did what we did.
Let me show you, boss, city planning department. Basically, this, uh, particular project is consistent with the community plan, land use designation, as well as the zoning. This particular site is zoned for R3, which allow up to eight unit and forty-five feet height limit. When the, the decision of the advisory agency was appealed by the app, appellant, the reference made to the community plan is wrong and this is based on the fact that preservation of existing single-family neighborhood only refers to lower, uh, designated, uh, low-density neighborhood. This particular site is zoned for medium, is zoned for medium-density residential, which allow up to forty-five feet height limit.
Is the four-stories forty-five feet then, it comes to that?
That is the maximum they can go.
So the, the, the four-stories will go forty-five feet, the rest of the area is, is two-stories, is some of them forty-five feet as well?
No, well, what, what is existing right now is based on the fact that, uh, a while back when the community plan was adopted and the zone was, uh, the, the land use was designated for medium-density, there are some existing single-family in this neighborhood and there are some apartments that are currently existing also. Um, what you are seeing now is a transition from what has been existing to what the zone actually, uh, the, the zone actually, actually allowed. So now, as I explained to the appellant, it takes a period of, uh, fifteen to ten years sometimes to see a transition in the neighborhood. Even though it's been, remained very stable for a while, at this point, people have taken advantage of these, of their zones and go into the highest, uh, allowable density by this, uh, zone designation.
So ten, fifteen years ago, it was zoned R3, which allowed a forty-five foot height, it never was exercised before and this is the first time it's being exercised?
Exactly.
Okay. What about the character and scale concept about things and character and scales, another issue regarding, you know, how you build things? Just, we have a big problem with mansionization and all these other issues going before community and it's a constant, uh, challenge frankly, because the community might look a certain way, but the zoning allows something else and community groups are deeply involved. The question of character and scale, how do you address that?
I think the character of scale would be relative to, um, what is going on in the community right now. If you look, I went to the site myself a couple of times and I discovered that, uh, there are remnants of single-family that are still existing in the neighborhood. You cannot particularly say that this legal, uh, neighborhood is, uh, low-density because that is not true.
Yeah.
Um, there are a couple of apartments there and there are a couple of, uh, single-family that are still, uh, existing. So it's, it's extremely difficult to say the, the, the character of the neighborhood is, uh, uh, low-density.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, appreciate that.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Mr. Salibo for his explanation. I think, Council, some of our, um, how can I say this? One of our challenges is how do we inform the communities as to what- One of our challenges is how do we inform the communities as to what the general plan does? This city has a history where in the mid-'80s, it was sued because what our community plan showed versus what was in the community were two different things. We went through a process called AB 283, and through that process, starting in the late ' '80s up until the early '90s, we went through an intensive review of the general plan. We updated our community plans to meet this lawsuit by the Hillside Federation. Today, because of change in our communities, what we see today versus what AB 283 and the general plan allowed don't always match because of that issue of transition. And so when we speak to transition zones, that is what many of the stakeholders who are used to a certain environment have a hard time accepting. When you look at it from a community plan point of view, from a more citywide point of view, therein lies, I think, was one of the areas we need to improve upon, and I thank the council for supporting the planning department. As we have more staff dealing with community plans, we have a greater, can I say, this opportunity to inform and let folks know what the legal parameters are of this general plan and what it says on paper versus what you see on the street. And that's an educational process, I believe, we all need to go through and allow us to understand these tensions. But thank you, Mr. Shalibah, for that explanation. And again, every neighborhood has its unique set of characteristics. How we define them is going to depend on how we get involved in this public process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weston.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members. I wasn't going to speak, but I feel compelled to at this point in time. You know, there's nothing I could do to stop the project. I don't really support the project. I wish it wasn't there. I've lived in this community 100 years. But I recognize that my hands are tied. So in order, other than just giving the developer a hard time, I don't want to have to deal with this in the community. So tonight, we're having a hearing. We're going to change the zone so that we can reduce the height from 45 feet to 35 feet, then I won't have to deal with this. We'll do everything that we can to protect the residential integrity of this district. So that's what I'm doing, and I'm comfortable that this will occur, and we'll make it happen as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Anybody else wishing to be heard from the council? Seeing none? Go ahead, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that does leave just the closed session items. Do you wish to take up the special meeting at this time?
Yes. And before that, Ms. Gruel, and we do have cards on the closed session items as well. Ms. Gruel?
If we could, on item number 12, if we could reconsider that item and then ask it to be continued 30 days.
Okay, there's no objection. Let's open the roll and reconsideration on 12. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved, and we will consider... For 30 days, you said? So June 26th?
Thirty days.
June 26th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. And yes, please call the roll for the special meeting.
Alec Concard, Ms. Gruel, Hahn, Weasel, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Vice-Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 14 members present on the floor. Mr. President?
Okay, if we can hold 57 on the desk and continue that back into the regular meeting, and if we can take...
Actually, Mr. President, that is an item that was waived at a committee, and I believe there are cards on that item.
Yeah, I'm going to take up the cards for that as well as 55, which has card on it and has not had a public hearing, as far as I can tell. So if we can go back, continue that into the regular meeting and take up item 55, please. We have two speaker cards on that, and starting with Zuma Dogg.
He's going to speak first, yeah, and then we'll go...
Mr. Dogg not here. Okay. And then our second speaker is Arnold Sachs.
Regarding this closed session item, I'm just curious that Metro Gold Line East Side Extension, not the construction authority, has entered into an agreement with TCG Los Angeles Incorporated. TCG Los Angeles Incorporated is the byproduct of a merger between SBC and AT&amp;T. Is therefore, since AT&amp;T has merged with SBC, and this is a case versus the city of LA versus AT&amp;T Wireless, is it all versus the city of LA, does this new... What the hell have we got here? This new company, this new merged company, have any bearing on this hearing? That would be my comment. I'd appreciate the additional comments outside the conversations being...
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
Thank you, sure.
Appreciate the comments on that. Public comment, we will close the public hearing on that, and that is for closed session as well. So, Mr. Clerk, any housekeeping before we go into closed session?
Council has motions for posting an interrival.
Those are posted and referred.
And that would clear the desk for closed session.
I know we'll come back for announcements, colleagues, but before we go into closed session, I want to wish our president pro tem, Wendy Gruel, a very happy birthday on her birthday day. So... We'll sing a little later, don't worry. And in accordance with California state law, we will now go into closed session to discuss legal matters that are before the council. We will come back into open session to announce anything that needs public notice of any actions that we take. If I can ask the sergeants-at-arms to please clear the room, and we will be back after closed session. Thank you. We had two settlements that require public vote as well, 56 and 57. If we can please take up 56, please.
On item 56, there's a recommendation to authorize the Board of Public Works to execute the settlement agreement related to the BKK site.
Okay, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with without objection. Next item, 57.
On item 57, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $150,001 in the case of William J. Cleary-Hugh versus City of Los Angeles.
All right. If we can please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. And now it's time for announcements? Is that right, Mr. Clerk? Done with all the business on the desk? Okay, announcements, colleagues? Anybody have announcements? Does anybody have... Yeah, Mr. Lavange, announcement?
I'm at 3201 Riverside Drive. There will be a community meeting to discuss a number of topics, including the senior center for the Greater Griffith Park area that is scheduled to be located at 3201 Riverside Drive in the parking lot of Friendship Auditorium. These would be the old trailers from the observatory temporary quarters that are now in the zoo. Also, we will discuss matters related to capital projects, such as the new water line and the sewer line that has to be connecting to the valley in the city. And finally, we'll have a discussion from the fire department on issues related to the firestorm of May 8th and including recovery efforts by the Department of Recreation and Parks led by John McCree, the general manager. Publix invited, refreshments will be served. 3201 Riverside Drive, just east of Las Feliz and Riverside, across the street from the historic and beautiful William Mahollan Fountain.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavange, and looking forward to being there as well. Mr. Zine?
Mr. President, I want to invite all of our viewers to the Valley Cultural Center's Food and Wine Festival, which is going to be Thursday, May 24th, starting at 5:00, going until 9:00 p.m. at 6100 Topanga Canyon. It's a wonderful event. All of the restaurants in the area provide a variety of food, and it's a great time. Hundreds and hundreds of people gather there every year. It's a fundraiser for Valley Cultural, and everyone's invited. So that's Thursday, 5:00 p.m. at the Promenade on Topanga Canyon, just north of the 101 Freeway, south of Victory. There'll be a big tent next to the Macy's. Everyone's invited to come out and participate, support Valley Cultural Center, bringing arts to the San Fernando Valley. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And of course, in Council District 13, we have the largest event in the city and the country. Tonight, the winner of American Idol will be revealed at the Kodak Theater. So we thank everybody for... If you're not watching Channel 35, I'm sure you'll be tuning into American Idol. And any other announcements, Mr. Reyes?
One last announcement. So I have our town hall meeting in Cypress Park at the Cypress Park Recreation Center at 6:00.
Thank you very much. Any adjourning motions, colleagues? Anybody have any adjourning motions? If there are no adjourning motions, then, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alec Concard, Ms. Gruel, Hahn, Weasel, Lavange, Parks, Reyes, Zine, Garcetti.
Thank you. We will next be in session this Friday, May 25th, at 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers. Have a great afternoon, and thank you all very much. We'll see you back here Friday.